Welcome. I'd like to welcome everybody to our city council meeting. I would like to remind everybody, if you wish to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, please complete a request to speak card and turn it into our city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. It is recommended that you seek resolution of a complaint through the appropriate city department by scheduling a meeting with a council member or city staff before bringing the matter to city council. So we'll stand up and do the flag. We'll do the pledge allegiance. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so our roll call, we have all councils present. So we'll go right down to approval of minutes, city council meeting minutes, April 1st, 2025. Move to approve minutes, April 1st, 2025, council meeting, regular meeting minutes as presented. I have a motion in second. Is there any discussion about the minutes? On favorite day, I, give your post. Financial part, excuse me, financial report, March 2025.
Um, thank you. You have your report in front of you. And so as I pointed out in, in the notes there, um, our general fund, we had the sale of lot 4400 on northeast front street for fees of approximately 125,700. I wanted, the big one that I'm excited about is our building fund received, you know, almost 1.2 million dollars. And that's just from one commercial entity because they pay for all of their permits, all of their fine view fees, everything upfront, even though they constructed phases. So that's why there's that huge payment in the building fund. Um, the congressional community project fund still has no activity, um, nothing on the book scheduled to start anytime soon either. Um, for our general reserve, we purchased a lot 4600 on northeast Portland Avenue for approximately 122,000. Um, for our street reserve, that one kind of, if you listen to the list, it kind of gives you an idea how busy we've been. So I've had payments come out of there just in the month of March. Um, there was payments for the northeast Columbia Avenue improvements project, the southwest Loop Road, which is the front street improvements, Wilson and Taylor sidewalk improvements, South Main Street improvements, and northeast front street improvements. Um, so that kind of gives an idea of just how many infrastructure projects we're working on. Um, and we just finished up our, our Geo Bond project, which was the, the water system improvements. Um, so, you know, with all these projects, I, I hope everybody can see that Boardman's moving, hustling, um, all across all different, all different parts of town. So, um, very excited for everything that's going on.
Any questions? I really like this. I appreciate that.
It would be nice to get it a little sooner. It's really hard. If we were having to make any decisions or think about how we're spending money, you get two seconds. And I know we don't approve the budget, but financials is, you know, they're just there for presentation, but fashion.
Um, to add to that, the, the last comment on that one is, um, or the second to last, we do have a job opening. We are hiring for a senior accountant to help out the finance department. Um, the first round didn't close last Friday. Uh, those are being, uh, scored and interviews scheduled for next week. So, um, as soon as that gets underway, we'll be adding to the finance department. Um, and our request for proposals for audit services also closed last Friday. Those are also being scored, um, so that we can have an auditor for this fiscal year, uh, since our current one will no longer be able to, uh, service all the clients that we previously had.
So I'm getting a lot of, uh, interest in the auditor.
We got four.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
So you're not down to just accepting whatever.
Right.
And we have a meeting next week.
And next Tuesday is our budget committee meeting.
Good reminder. Thank you. Any other questions? Alright, go on next to the purchasing policy discussion.
So I'll, I'll start it off. We have, um, Aysen is online to help with, there she is, uh, to help with this. So what it is, is we're looking, um, and, and you have documents. So we're looking at removing the ordinance, repealing the ordinance and putting this in a resolution. And the concept helps with me and you just of managing the funds. There are state requirements of how, how much you, uh, when you have to go out for proposals and it, it sets the cap limit, the state has like a threshold, but then you guys can change and do one specifically for the city. Um, and then the hope is that we would adopt that in a resolution. Aysen, can you make that sound a lot better?
No, you, you did great. Um, yeah, currently the city's contracting rules are in the code. Um, and I believe they haven't been updated for quite some time. And so what a lot of, um, cities are doing is housing their public contracting roles in sort of, in a policy format and adopting them via resolution. Because that gives you greater flexibility in the future, um, in terms of updating a policy via resolution versus having to update, um, a code provision, you know, and doing that via ordinance. So that's just sort of the mechanics of why, um, you know, I would recommend that you do it that way. In terms of the substance of the rules themselves and the policy, um, yes, this is very much aligned what the current, um, thresholds are in the public contracting code. Um, uh, so it aligns with what, you know, the current, um, what the current laws are. And then, um, it just tracks very much what other jurisdictions are doing, what other cities are doing in terms of, um, these model rules. So it's divided into, you know, personal services, goods and services, um, construction related services, and then public improvements. And then essentially you have small, intermediate, and large procurements, um, that track the dollar amounts under state law.
And, and she, and if you have, you have that on your summary, the, uh, public contracting rule summaries, that's what she's kind of talking about right now. So that's in your packet. And then there's, uh, an example of what the resolution would state, um, in there. And really this is a time for discussion. Are we fine with how it's written? Um, do we want to go lower on some of the areas? Again, this is just time to talk about it. I really liked her summary, the colored summary. Yes. Yeah, I do have a question on page 13, you know, because it's talking about, uh, posting it online and not in writing. And I guess I'm always not in favor of just doing everything online. And so, uh, part of, Aysen, maybe you can, and you can speak to that too, but part of that is nowadays with like the posting and sometimes it's, I mean, it's a
And the newspaper only posting once a month.
Exactly. Yeah. Trying to hit that. It can be a pain. And I, I even thought the website was a new thing because I, I always thought you had to go to the newspaper and there was no flexibility. So did that change?
And this is just an option. So you can still do a newspaper if you prefer that. Um, but this is an area where it's helpful if you clarify in your rules and, and this gives you greater flexibility. So you can choose to advertise it electronically, or you can still go the traditional route.
Okay. So yeah, any other questions, discussion?
I wanted to point out, oh, go ahead. I had one area, I want one other area I wanted to highlight, but please go ahead.
Keep going.
Nope. I wanted to highlight, um, at the end of the resolution, um, on page 15, section 110, this is also where, um, you establish signature authority for the city manager, which is also pretty typical, the jurisdictions do in their rules. Um, and so basically this is the dollar amount, um, pursuant to which the city manager can sign contracts without council approval. Um, and I think, what do we have in here? $125,000. Um, which is pretty common, you know, among, um, among, uh, cities, but it's completely up to you, the dollar amount that you want to include here. So anything more than this for a contract, it would have to come to city council for approval.
And, and Aysen, how does that work when, I mean, because some of the, uh, like the big, you know, like Main Street projects, there the several million, how, is that a different process? How does that work?
So that would mean for a project that's several mil- million dollars, that would have to come to council for, um, approval. So only contracts, um, that the value is $125,000 or less, those would be the only contracts that the city manager could sign directly without getting additional approval from council.
My question was, uh, where were we talking about, uh, notice? Were, was it 15? And so I was, I just thought that page 13, is that just more this type of notice for that, for any notice that we do?
So section 1.10.060, um, the last sentence in that first paragraph, "The city manager shall have the authority to determine when electronic publication is appropriate and consistent with the city's contracting policies." So anything that has to do with contracts, um, that would fall under the table that Aysen, uh, also attached. So personal services, business services, architects, engineers, public improvement.
I understand that now.
So this would be your solicitation documents. You could post your RFPs and your ITBs, or if you have any, let's say, um, addenda that you were posting throughout your solicitation process. And then, let's say, once you're getting ready to award a contract, your notice of intent to award, all of those notices throughout your solicitation process, this allows you to do that electronically.
And I think item number two is the caveat. It says, "The advertisement for improvements over 125,000 must be published at least one time in a trade newspaper."
Right. For constructions. Mm-hmm. Exactly. That's required under state law. Yeah.
And that's all, I mean, all the construction stuff is through Anderson Perry. They handle all that. Yeah, publications.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Um, I have a question I have on the surplus. Um, is there any, um, amount on there, like a maximum? Um, like if there, if your, um, says that you can determine if it's surplus and no longer useful to the city, but is there any sort of value or, um, a dollar amount or estimated dollar amount? Does that make a difference? Because it includes equipment, vehicles.
I don't. Hey, yeah, Aysen, do you see that? Any?
Yeah, so there is no dollar amount. This is, um, intended to be sort of very high level and flexible. But if you wanted to, um, enact a policy that had sort of more details and dollar amounts, that's, that's possible as well. Some cities do have, um, more detailed policies with different sort of thresholds and different requirements for different types of properties. Um, so this is intended to be just sort of pretty high level.
So in the past, we've had, I think, final say on surplus of like police cars, things like that.
Yeah, always.
Always. So this would take that out of the, this would remove that?
No, same, same process, right? Does it say we don't have to go through council approval?
It does. Says the city manager may authorize the sale, donation, transfer, transfer to another government. It's on page 15.
Thank you.
Auction, liquidation, or fixed price sale, trade in, or destruction of surplus property, anything but real property. Could be done by city. Not that I'm a control freak, but it might be hard to let go of that one.
But what is real property? Because every time we do this.
Land and buildings, I believe.
No, I thought be able to set the real property.
Well, I don't think you're a property tax guy.
So that's why this one isn't under action item is exactly for this document. What do you guys want to set as the boundaries?
Because yeah, our current practice, Aysen, is that every surplus item does go to the city council. I mean, there might be some managers that really appreciate the ability to just surplus things and clean up as needed. Not necessarily me.
He does like to get his stuff though.
Shoot, I really like that.
It's completely up to you. If you would prefer everything to go to council, you can certainly set it up that way. Or if there's a very sort of minimal dollar value, you know, $500, $1,000, whatever that, that you wanted to say the city manager could, could do that without approval. It's completely your discretion, um, how you want your policy to be.
And, and we'll, we're, we're taking note of this if that's something that you're asking.
I like the dollar amount. I, I don't think we need to micromanage surplus items, but is there, just for the point of discussion, should there be an amount that, you know?
Oh, wait, there's a dollar amount of surplus that?
They, they, they talked about council, but, I mean, to get rid of a car, I mean, that's what we pay you and our staff to figure out to do. I don't think I need to micromanage that being the devil's advocate here. Why should I? I mean, that's what I pay you to do. So, uh, if there is a, do we want to set a dollar amount? Do we not want to set a dollar amount? Do we care? Do we really not care as far as the ability of the city manager and staff to surplus?
And, yeah, and, and real property you saw is not included in that, right?
Right.
Yes, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to Paul on that one more of, just kind of get it done. Like a little heads up at the end of, you know, I guess not heads up, but a notification. Sold the car or buying another one, that's been, like, that's enough for me. First, I don't think we need to be notified of simple things, you know, phones, guests, you know, things like that, you know? Individually, you get what I'm saying?
But so if, if it were to exceed what? So if we're saying that we're going to surplus something that it, that could exceed?
Is it each item would exceed this?
Oh, that's up to you. That's a good point.
What do you mean, Raymond?
Well, I think the truck, I think of like, if you're going to get rid of the street sweeper, that's a, a big enough value dollar item that maybe that should be some, you know, I don't know, but like the mayor says, what do we know about the price of a street sweeper?
I guess to answer Paul's question, I guess I feel like if we're replacing a squad car, we surplus it and it's going to go to another neighboring community. I like knowing about it. I don't necessarily need to approve it, but it is nice to be asked, so.
And that goes, but. And it, and it really has not been a big deal.
Yeah, I don't think.
We'll have some vehicles that we surplus. There were some items that we did over there. I just.
And I can think of a time when the council even had so much as a, no, I don't think you should do that kind of sensation.
Maybe if you just put it in your city manager's report so that we can review it before it's done, instead of taking like a formal action.
Yeah, just as a. Maybe if it's over 10,000.
Excluding vehicles and, um, the, uh, real property. Just because in other cities, what I have seen in some of the news reports is that is where you get into, um, issues with, um, budgets, where you have law enforcement that has, you know, decided that they were going to take in an additional vehicle or two. And then we're surplusing, and then it becomes this issue where the community is like, wait a minute, why are they getting through vehicles? And then, um, the city council wasn't involved, right? Like the city manager is the one that made that decision. And when I think about the changes that we're making, it's not just while we're sitting up here or while you're there as the city manager. But if nobody changes that 20 years from now and whoever's in that place decides that they want to
Correct.
make a lot of these changes. The rest of the stuff, it, it really doesn't matter.
So, so for examples, surplus such as office furnitures, computers, equipment, excluding vehicles and real property, like anything like that?
Yeah, that's fair.
Cool. Alright.
Anything else that you can think of?
And just like Karen was saying, it, it really is just that concise, I love the platform. It's just that we can follow it. There have been a lot of times that we feel like we're shooting from the hip a lot. Not that, I mean, we're going by the law, but it's just nice to like, oh, it's so nice and neat to see this, how you do it. And really, Aysen did a great job with that. Thank you so much.
Anything else? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to our formal proceeding, uh, supplemental budget hearing. The public hearing on supplemental budget 2425 is called to order. Conduct the public hearing. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. We'll have a staff report, public testimony in the following order, any testimony that supported the action, any testimony opposing the action, any neutral testimony. Then we will close the public testimony. After the record is closed for testimony, no other testimony will be heard from anyone unless the city council has a specific question. The city council may ask questions of staff, after which the city council will discuss the matter and make a decision. The city council may make a final decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matter is continued, this will be the only notice of that time and date you will receive. Testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the city clerk. I will recognize those people wishing to speak. Any questions should be addressed to me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium as the hearing is being recorded. Please keep testimony concise and to the point. Testimony should be on the action under consideration. Staff report. Finance director, Martha Barajas, will now present the staff report.
Thank you. As of today, we're eighty, we're over 80% through the fiscal year. As routine tasks are completed and the upcoming projected, the unexpected ones are dealt with. This year has certainly come with lots of exciting opportunities, but also unexpected challenges that have come with extra sweat, grief, sorrow, anger. In our general fund, an increase of 142,000 materials and services appropriations from operating contingency is requested due to a very active year. This year, we've had extra legal services regarding employment issues, updating our personnel policy handbook, an additional bargaining agreement, real estate issues, land partitions, land use, updating our easement access, um, franchise free agreements, and various other matters on which legal counsel is sought. We are in the middle of another employment bargaining agreement. We have active real estate matters and are working on procurement and purchasing policy. And some of the legal counsel questions come up unexpectedly. General engineering services were also in high demand this year. In the analysis of upcoming projects, creating a capital improvement project plan, assisting with general compliance agencies reporting, and attendance at various community meetings. Other professional fees have also been regularly used. These consultant services range from housing to appraisals, to payroll, to audit fees. Some of our outdated computers may need to be replaced this fiscal year. As Microsoft has announced ending its support of Windows 10, IT will be determining compatibility with Windows 11, and those computers that do not meet the compatibility test will need to be replaced. We anticipate having to replace approximately 10 to 14 computers. We plan on spreading out the purchasing of these between now and this fall. Internet services, office supplies, and data hosting fees, which are software subscriptions, will require an increase to get us through the fiscal year. The water fund, early in the year, our public works department was faced with many extra water issues as the Columbia Avenue Northwest project brought many unexpected water line breaks and a few from our water system improvement project. It included many, many overtime hours of our staff. These labor hours were charged directly to the water fund. Also unexpectedly, at the beginning of 2025, we experienced the passing of our public works director, Ron Pratt. Unanticipated payroll expenses were incurred as leave approvals and pertinent benefits were paid out to his survivors. We also have interim coverage and the wages of the new public works director. With more capital projects involving water lines ahead of us, an additional 50,000 in personnel service appropriations are needed to finish out the fiscal year. Materials and services for the water fund need an appropriation increase of 27,200. The city is having four public works employees attend a commercial driving license course to obtain their CDL license. Employees will be sent at different times to ensure adequate coverage of the public works department. Some employees will also incur travel expenses while others will have the opportunity to attend locally. This will ensure that we have enough drivers for the heavy equipment that require this licensure. This fee is shared amongst the water sewer and street fund. Additional testing required by Oregon Health Authority is being considered for the exposure, the quantity of tests and the cost of the required tests. A change in laboratory was also made due to the prior laboratory not being able to get the results in a timely manner to submit to the state in the required turnaround time. This reflected negatively on our reporting and compliance. This, however, did increase our laboratory costs. Ground maintenance is anticipated to have a few more expenses before year end, and screen has definitely brought to light some repairs and maintenance that are needed. System maintenance includes all water supports such as water meters. The continued growth in housing and commercial development requires for constant purchasing of water meters, radio rays, plus all the pertinent installation accessories. The water fund operating contingency will decrease by 77,200 to increase the additional appropriations as mentioned above. In our sewer fund, the sewer fund's material services are needing an increase in appropriations of $78,000 for this fiscal year. The sewer fund's operating contingency would be decreased by the $78,000. This fund will have a share of the CDL course, travel, and testing fees. Internet fees, ground maintenance, and fuel and oil are anticipated to be more than budgeted before year end. Our largest appropriation is for system maintenance. We have three lift stations redone approximately three years ago and are due for a major routine maintenance. The other lift stations will also be scheduled for their maintenance. Due to scheduling availability, we would like to have the funds available if maintenance can be performed before the fiscal year ends. In the garbage fund, as housing and commercial developments continue, garbage revenues and corresponding solid waste disposal needs increase. We anticipate an increase in garbage fee revenues of $450,000 above the original budget of revenues. That were not expected. We would like to account for these additional revenues and appropriate them to materials and services for solid waste disposal pops. In addition, $106,400 from operating contingency is also necessary to cover the increase in materials and services expenses. Internet fees will also receive a portion of this appropriation to ensure that this expenditure is covered through the end of the fiscal year. The street fund, additional appropriations of $70,000 for personnel services and $13,700 for materials and services will come from operating contingency for an overall amount of $83,700. This fund also has an increase in direct labor costs of the public works department due to the various street infrastructure projects that require our staff's time, including sidewalk reviews and inspections at new developments. We anticipate starting another street project this fiscal year and would like to have funds if the unexpected arises of our public works department to assist. Combined with the final payout of our previous public works director, this appropriation Combined with the final payout of our previous public works director, this appropriation is necessary to have the funds needed through year end. Materials and services increase in appropriations is towards share of the CDL force, travel, and testing fees. Additional expenditures for grounds maintenance and fuel and oil are also expected to be more than originally budgeted. In the building fund, materials and services will need additional appropriations in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars. This will decrease the operating contingency by the same amount. Internet fees and office equipment are anticipated to be more than originally budgeted. Office furniture purchases were not anticipating having a large expenditure this year, however, the furniture supplier for the city hall expansion of the building department realized they hadn't fully billed us for the furniture orders due to a change of their billing software. This invoice is for approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars. Water reserve fund, the water system improvements phase two has been completed. This project was funded through a GEO bond. The proceeds and interest of the GEO bond were exhausted, and the water reserve fund will fill the funding gap. Operating contingency will be decreased by two hundred ninety thousand three hundred dollars, and appropriations for an interfund transfer to the capital projects fund will increase by two hundred ninety thousand three hundred dollars. The capital project fund, this fiscal year began with an unexpected beginning cash balance of four hundred ninety-four thousand two hundred dollars above the budgeted amount. Interest income will also be higher than anticipated by twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars. We are recognizing these additional revenues in the amount of five hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars and appropriating them to the capital outlay expenditures. This fund will also recognize the two hundred ninety thousand three hundred dollars being transferred from the water reserve fund and appropriating it to the capital outlay as well. This will close out the capital project fund. A budget is a guide to the expenditures we anticipate we will incur during the fiscal year. Operating contingencies are for what ifs and the unexpected. Most of the funds addressed in this supplemental budget will utilize their operating contingencies to cover these unanticipated expenditures, therefore not incurring any increases in the funds. Only two funds had an increase in their budgeted fund balance. The garbage fund will have a fund increase of four hundred fifty thousand dollars, both in recognized revenues and expenditures. The capital project fund will have a fund increase of eight hundred ten thousand dollars with five hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars in recognized revenues and two hundred ninety thousand three hundred dollars from an interfund transfer, which increases capital outlay appropriations by eight hundred ten thousand dollars. This supplemental budget accounts for the expenditures to date, the anticipated expenditures, and allows for some unanticipated expenditures. With a couple of months left to go in this fiscal year, here's to writing out the way with this supplemental budget. Thank you.
Okay, is there any additional correspondence beyond these items included in the next package? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the action? Does anyone's wish to speak against the action? Does anyone have any neutral testimony? Uh, there is no comment, the city manager will not have to provide her vote. Close the hearing, the public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion by the city council? So, Martha, I I know this is, to me, this seems like a whole lot of, like, a spreadsheet put into Word form.
It is.
So, uh, to help me understand, it's just readjusting funds to help allocate to make sure that the funds are
So, yeah, if you look at your attachment, which is what went into the newspaper, it was published in the newspaper, um, that really gives you, like you said, that really simple of, you know, for the general fund, materials and services is increasing by one hundred forty-two thousand, but we're taking it out of the operating contingency. So, there are no additional expenses overall, the math comes out to zero. Your operating contingency is kind of like this pot that you set aside so that you can move it into the different categories as is needed through the year because a budget can't be a hundred percent exact, and that's what your operating contingency is for.
So, everything that we're supplementing this budget with comes out of the contingency fund?
Most of them, yes.
Did we have the that from that?
No. So, the general fund, everything that we're increasing appropriations for materials and services is coming out of its operating contingency.
So, just clarify, where is the operating contingency?
So, it's not separate on there, it's in your total fund balance. Um, when you're looking at expenses and what we've budgeted for expenses, your operating contingency is included in that amount, in that total, because all we're doing right now is just moving it from the operating contingency category to materials and services.
So, I guess my question is that you're saying that our GEO bond was, uh, eight hundred and ten thousand short of the amount we asked the bond for the bond. Is that what you're saying?
Kind of, it's asking for, so when you appropriate in a budget, what the council is adopting is saying, this is how much I'm authorizing you to spend. Again, when we do the budget, we use a lot of information of where we think we're going to be, so our beginning cash. When I have to determine what I think our beginning cash is going to be on July first, um, that can change with what the actual comes in. Because our GEO bond fund, the budgeted amount for beginning cash was so much less than what I had budgeted, what I'm asking for is I'm asking for you to recognize that additional cash so that I can spend it in making the payments.
So, when I look at the sheet you gave us monthly, and in the GEO bond, it says we have a million one hundred thirty-six thousand left in there.
Okay.
So, how does that relate to the eight hundred and ten thousand that I need to put back in there?
So, what that one is doing is in the, uh, the budget line items, so columns. So, column H, or the heading is H, unexp- unexpended budget for the capital project fund. So, on that one is, that's what I'm saying is that what we've budgeted, you allowing us to spend doesn't include that additional cash that we have so that the gap funding that I need from the water reserve doesn't have to be as large, because I'm using its own money. I know it's a little confusing. Trying to explain it as best I can.
Well, I guess that it, when I'm looking at this, at what we get monthly,
Mm-hmm.
and I'm going along here thinking I have a million left in that GEO bond. And then you come and say, no, no. No, you don't have that.
Oh, the way you're looking at the GEO bond fund, that's the debt fund, so that's only the payment for the loan.
Right.
So, the capital project fund is the one that we're actually paying the contractor.
Okay, so we go, I go up to four-ten?
Yes.
Okay, and and we're short a hundred thousand?
Yep, as of March, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. That's why I'm asking to be able to recognize that additional money that we had from the very beginning of the fiscal year, um, to be able to pay out our contractor, and then that gap funding from the water reserve would be less because I'm recognizing the full revenue that's in there.
Okay, so that makes it clear when we're we're actually looking at the capital project,
At the right ones, yes. Yeah, the GEO bond one only houses the debt. So, that one is the tax money that comes in and the payment that we make on our GEO bond. That's all that fund houses, the GEO bond fund.
Okay, that's, okay, got it.
Yep.
Are there any other questions?
I'm still putting my head around it, Martha, so in column H, it says it's two hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred ninety-four dollar deficit?
Sure, sure, sure.
And in column D to G, it's a hundred thousand, so does that mean that there's, from D to G, there's money coming in to help cover a hundred fifty-six thousand of that?
Uh, yeah, what the supplemental budget is asking for.
Oh.
Okay, um, because this, this report is only through March thirty-first, and so as of March thirty-first, we hadn't finished paying off all of our, uh, water system improvement payments to the contractor. So, this is to to recognize the additional revenue so we can use that to pay the contractor, plus the difference will come from the water reserve, and then you won't have that as a negative. Once everything is all said and done, your ending fund balance for fund four-ten will be zero. So, right now, it's like, oh, we don't have enough money to cover the contractor's bill um, based on how much you've authorized us to spend. So, that's why, that's why I need you to authorize that increase in appropriation so we can fully cover what the contractors' final bills are going to be and close out this fund, and the ending fund balance will be zero.
Okay, thank you. So, you, so you're taking some from lots of different funds?
Just the water reserve.
What, what, what does it say about building fund and street fund?
Oh, the entire supplemental budget, yes, is different funds.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, but it only has to do with the one at the bottom for the this, okay, got it?
Do you guys have a few comments? Okay, having hearing then, we'll continue. We'll go to action items, actually, public compound. Pre-raised presentation, what we've been waiting for, Martha schools to start off with San Boardman Elementary.
Over here.
Welcome.
Wait, somebody, get close, get up close.
Hello, we're the city council, thank you for having us. My name is Avissa Garcia, I am Christian of the village. We have third grade students at San Boardman Elementary. We are here to share with you some of the exciting things going on in our school. May's whole exciting thing bringing us for the end of this school year. To kick it off, the first week of May's future appreciation week. This is a special time of the year when we take part in recognizing and celebrating the features that have helped us become the amazing, smart, and moderate young people we are, and please take a future for all of you. Second grade at SBE will be having their field trip to the Think Big Space at the Sage Center the second week of May. What an awesome chance to experience so many cool things like the structures, coding the game, and playing with robots. We have, we hope they have fun, and thank you Sage Center for opening your doors to the students of SBE. Additionally, second grade will be up to explore Walla Walla, that's a movie to learn about, the history of pioneers and whereabouts of exploration for the West. First people will be going to the front area on the Tri-City, on May fifteenth, they'll get to experience seeing the star of the fence almost as closely as the astronauts. They're excited for the things they're going to.
RHS is having a leadership play a role on May fifteenth of four P M. to seven thirty P M. Please come and support, we have long school on May twenty-fourth. This is, this is Memorial Day, so take time to remember those who have come before us and give them, and give them their life freedoms of America. Celebrate with a picnic or a nice day at the park. At the end of the month, we will be having our monthly Buccaneer Awards Assembly at San Boardman. This is a special time to celebrate those students who are going above and beyond. If you know a student of the month, be sure to congratulate them on a job well done. Families and parents are always welcome to attend to celebrate their students on May twenty-fifth at three P M. Thank you for letting us speak to the community about all of the exciting things happening at San Boardman Elementary.
Nice event. Good job. All right, Fernanda, you're up.
Hello, city council, my name is Fernanda, and I am here representing Windy River Elementary to give you our report on our activities and upcoming events. This spring has been very busy for us. We finished day testing and just started our spring eye-ready diagnostic today. For this test, we're doing different but very fun schedule. The schedule includes rehearsing for our spring concert, eating ice sandwiches, and having super recesses. Speaking of our concert, we are having it next Thursday. Next week, we also have a bookstore in our library to encourage more reading. In addition to these upcoming events, fourth grade will be going to the Fort Worth Zoo on May twenty-second, fifth grade will be going to the Western Train and Autumn Freedom Museum, and the Columbia River Forest Discovery Center on May twenty-ninth. And sixth grade will be going to the Columbia Basin College on June fourteenth. We have one last upcoming family event at Windy River, which is our fourth annual multicultural night on June fifth from four o'clock to six o'clock. We hope to see you then, thank you for your time, from W R E.
So, this is just a super cool opportunity that we get to hear from our young people to do public speaking, and I am super, super excited that we have schools that support that, so good job. So, for those who need to go, you just feel free to just quietly excuse yourself and don't feel like you have to stay for the rest of the meeting, and thank you again for showing up there, thank you. So, we have the report-only chamber V C D A report, it's in our, in our packet, and we just go right on to the next one, resolution eleven dash twenty-two-five declaring sur- surplus personal property.
Hey, chief? That's the car.
We have two surplus vehicles that we're going to, uh, Stanfield P D has offered to pay us for both of them, one of them, I I feel really bad about even charging them for, because they're kind of poor in shape. It's going to cost them a lot of money to get it back home very, uh, so we'll kind of offset that, uh, with the other vehicle that is in decent shape. Uh, so, we would ask that you surplus, allow us to surplus their vehicles and, uh, sell them to Stanfield.
I move your group resolution eleven two thousand twenty-five to resolutionifying city board more public property as an access.
Sir. Hold on a second though. We got a motion in a second, is there any discussion over this? All in favor, say aye, aye, any opposed? Resolution, well, yeah, twenty-two-five supplemental budget fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
So, not a lot more than what I can say with what Martha has shared. So not a lot more than what I can say with what Martha has shared. There really is a lot going on, um. When it comes to like um training, that really, I take that personally, just making sure the staff are fully trained. Um, just the, the C D L is in my mind, just a big deal. We have several vehicles. We want to make sure they're backed up. So it, it again, it is just one of those unexpected expenses. There has been training. Um, and then just making sure we're doing things just right. I, I mean, we're, we're definitely being noticed. In Boardman, so, so I definitely do ask for those legal advice, um. And, and Anderson Perry has been amazing. I, I do demand a lot of their time, but. I'm trying to adhere to like these projects that we're doing and, and it, it takes time, but again, that comes with a cost, but. The benefit is that end result that is. Super cool in terms of, so that's, Martha, anything else?
Uh, no, and Anderson Perry was one of the ones who stepped in um to help provide public works director interim coverage, so. But maybe in the resolution, we can see where it's still a need of just the numbers and it makes it easier for you to see.
I move your group Resolution twelve dash two thousand twenty-five, a resolution to adopt the supplemental city budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
Same, but you got a motion in a second. I know we got to talk about it a little bit, but is there any more discussion about the supplemental budget? Do you anticipate us stopping to do this again?
No.
With some of the training um due to the cost um for things like the C D L. Um, are you also um putting in supply some um like uh requirements where they would have to remain? Or they would have to pay the city back?
There was legal counsel on that.
I'd like to hear.
Well, it's not as easy because of the bargaining unit, so.
Cause I do remember that is working for Laurel County School District, they paid for a portion.
So there is a, no.
So.
And I'm advised to do it.
Right.
From our county.
Legal counsel.
Legal counsel, yes, correct.
I, I don't have that much time. Are there any other questions? Okay, having hearing then, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, so capital improvement plan.
So um then we, we've had some really good discussions uh. Over the past year and a half and have a very good list. Uh, our capital improvement plan. Projects, whatever, plan, but it is a living document. So the, the hope of this resolution is to allow it to keep living and, and it will never. Move forward with anything if we don't have the money, um, if, if it's not part of our plan. Um, and it's not approved in the budget. That's, that's simply all. We're wanting to do, and then we don't have to ask every time we change it, like, hey, we just changed the, the plan. What do you guys think about it now? It's, it's gonna be an ongoing discussion and this just allows that to take place.
And to clarify, this is not a resolution. This is just a motion.
Thank you, thank you. We just did a research.
Yeah.
So, C F P, didn't we like sit down basically and say, hey, this is more priorities that?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, so that's during this, what at the end of the day give you authority to go with that and say. No, this is priority.
No, no, cause it's gonna be approved in the budget. And I have to have your approval.
We didn't have this already?
Not this clear, not, not this clear.
Oh, this makes it like super specific.
Yeah.
But this is how we're gonna run our projects.
Correct.
Yeah.
Based on the workshops that we've done, there's a list and.
Yes, and, and we're gonna add to that list, take things away from the list, and it's just gonna keep ongoing.
All right, so I'm going to adopt this Steve Boardman Capital Improvement Plan, understanding it is a guide of future projects. Projects to be carried out as determined by priority and financial availability as delineated in each year's budget.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on C I P? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? The Boardman Park and Rec District I G A.
Okay, we have an I G A that we just need to clean up. Um, the I G A we have existing currently has the park district still doing the lawns. They are no longer doing the lawns. Um, this also adds the agreement that we have with the park. To do the master planning and their portion of their payment, right?
Yes.
So it clears that all up. Once the park master plan is done, then there's no agreement yet the park district did this time.
I move to approve City Manager Hammond, sign the intergovernmental agreement with the Boardman Park and Recreation District.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Boardman Housing Initiative, Boardman Proposal four dash twenty-four dash twenty-five.
Okay. So we went through the R F Q, the request for qualifications. We went through that process. Um, we had one submitted. We have given them a letter of intent. That's the Missing Middle Housing Fund.
Intent to award.
Intent to award, thank you. Intent to award. Um, so at this process, it has to go seven days. So I'm requesting approval to after the seven-day process has been completed, that to go sign into contract. So this has been a very long process and I cannot thank you guys enough. Because there is like kind of going out a little bit in the unknown. Um, and there's been so much talk about housing. All the years I've been here, there's been talk about housing. And to me, this is like, this is happening. Like this is the rubber hits the road. You guys have, have a housing committee. We have a million-dollar fund. And now we just, let's go do something with it. So it, it really is a cool process. Now, it's not gonna be like all neat and tidy and everything falls right into place, but we're doing something. And I, and I really think, and it, I don't know who did these up here, but um these really nice. Strategic goals that you guys have adopted, it goes right along with that. Provide a full range of housing options. That is the council's goal. So this city, the city of Boardman clearly knows where you guys stand and this is that next step. Um, Nathan Wildfire is on. And unmute, muting, there it goes, he's waving. Um. He, Nathan, do you wanna speak? So there is some unique things that the Missing Middle has been. Uh, is connected with the state of Oregon. The governor is really pushing on. Affordable housing and Missing Middle is kind of in that mix. Nathan, do you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, sure. Um, hello, everyone again. Um, as you guys know, we're a five O one C three nonprofit that works across the state. To address uh housing shortages, particularly for workforce. So middle-income earners in your community uh seeking attainable housing. Um, one of the big things the state just launched uh six weeks ago is the Moderate Income Revolving Loan Fund. So this is a loan fund um that the state set up to enable uh projects in. Any jurisdiction across the state to access additional capital to uh fill budget gaps. Um, it's a sort of convoluted way to fund projects. Uh, but the way it works is the state loans cities dollars uh on a project-by-project basis. And then those, the cities then uh create grants that they give to eligible projects. Building middle-income housing. And the way that the loan gets paid back to the state is that those projects uh take a portion of the increment. In the value of the taxes that are, are generated from actually building housing. That goes back to the city and then the city pays back the state for the loan. So the functional way it works is that um. Projects get dollars upfront. The reason Brandon's referencing that one is because we are working. With a couple different cities around the state right now to test pilot that project. And we recommended that you be one of those uh test pilot projects. You have to have a project. There's a whole process that you have to go through to do it. But um given our work with you over the past year, we thought you'd be a great fit uh to actually help um. Try, try this project out and bring some state resources to uh needed housing in your community. So that's one. Um, a second statewide initiative is we just went back to Business Oregon. To uh, to get some funding to help support what we call uh digital zoning infrastructure. Um, I think I've mentioned this to your council before, but Yamhill County, Oregon is the first county in America. To have all of its zoning codes digitized. So at the press of a button, you can have free to anyone in your community. Um, every piece of information there is about uh a zoning code's impact on a parcel. Which, as I think Carla might tell you, uh is, it takes a lot of work to do a single report on a, a single parcel. Um, for zoning codes uh anywhere. And so we went back to Business Oregon to say this was such a big success. We would like to roll this out in a couple other new counties. The ones that we started with were Polk County and Coos County. Um, but they were so excited about the um, the possibility of this spreading. That they asked if we had recommendations to think about next and we, we recommended Moro County. So um, I think Brandon just wanted me to bring those, that kind of work up to you because we're, we're. We have to be because of the nature of our job keyed into these different initiatives that help drive. Housing starts around the state and it would be um through, through the R F Q that you all released. This would just be a different way to add housing capacity to your team. And leverage those statewide uh connections and programs. Brandon, is that, is that sort of what you were poking at me to, to speak about? Okay. And there's many more. Those are just two examples. Um, but they're examples that are live right now.
Do you have any questions about the Boardman Housing wish?
I have only a question, but I'm just excited about it. I think, I think. Boardman kind of being on the, on the ground floor is a good thing.
Definitely feel we're ahead of the game. I really do. It's a lot of work you guys have put into that helps us set up for what Nathan is talking about. And the state is getting ready to do the. Hey, there we go, we're ready.
Um, may I, may I pop in for one other? Um, I, you know, I've said this to you folks before, but um. It, it is true that there's not a whole lot of other states across, or sorry, cities. Across the state that are being this proactive about creating um technical capacity and dollars, frankly. Um, to address their housing shortages, uh particularly around workforce housing. There, there are, there's not a lot of programs, but there are at least some for deeply affordable, uh very low-income housing. There's very few um housing funds that have as one of their priorities, this, this middle income. Band of housing. It's the housing we create least in Oregon. So I'm, I'll, I'll just tell you again. But there's a lot of folks around the state looking to you uh as a potential model for them. Um, I think that you have an opportunity not to just make change in your home city. But actually influence how other cities are then actually doing this work. You, you are ahead of the game.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
I move to approve City Manager Hammond, develop and enter into contract the management of the funding process of the Boardman Housing Initiative. After the seven-day protest period has ended.
I'll second that.
Yeah, a motion in a second. Does anyone have any additional? Uh, comments or questions about this?
What's the protest period? Like, what's that about?
So someone can protest the.
The intent for award.
Yeah.
We have to post it for seven days um before we can actually award.
Yeah, I can just.
In case somebody who, somebody else who applied or protested that they were.
Protested, they didn't meet the qualifications, that they may have better qualifications or something, but you know, they. I should have applied when it was open, but.
Right.
We're so happy with the seven days, so.
Okay, that's what I was just trying to figure it out, like, why would they?
Is, is that what that letter is about?
Yes.
Okay. I thought maybe he was looking at for a job. Missing middle management there.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, so we'll move down to the letter of support for Mark County School District Bond Measure twenty-five dash one oh four. So I've been thinking about this a lot and. I'm not, I, I guess my point is that I've come out in the mayor's message. On the economic reasons, so why to vote for the bond? Uh, I'm a little concerned as a council to publicly endorse for each individuals. And if you want to individually support it, I think that's important. I'm kind of concerned as a. Each individual come out and support. I think voting is a personal issue. And not necessarily a public issue. However, as the mayor message said, it is um. Economically to our advantage if we do vote it for. I don't think I told anybody to vote or not vote for it. But that, if you wanted to read my full uh answer on the support of the bond. You could easily read the mayor message in the North Laurel County Times that came on out of the first of April, or the first of May. It was the first of May. Uh, and that is all I wish to comment about. The letter of support for the bond. Does anybody else have anything they would like to say?
I went to the Boardman Town Hall meeting, which I had been reading up on this and I've. Worked at the schools. I've been through the last bond process twenty years ago, how long that was. Um, and uh, I, I liked the presentation and wrote it down. They made it very simple. If you had any questions like or concerns, they, you know, I think the biggest thing was, was a lot of people didn't understand assessed value and real value. And so they were looking at real value and thinking, oh my gosh, this is how much it is. It's like, wait, that's not how that works. And at the same time, you know, understanding how um, you know, businesses like Amazon and Westons or whatever, that local assessors aren't involved with that. That's, the state's involved with that. And so there's all this, there, there's this whole process that I think a lot of people didn't understand. And after you went to the town hall and you asked some questions and you learned about it, that was good. And as somebody that, you know, like I'd say, me, Heather, maybe Christina, we've been through all three of, or. We've been through San Boardman, you know, Wendy River wasn't here, but we went to junior high in Columbia and then high school Riverside. And we know what those buildings look like, especially here against school. Like, it was old when we went to school there. And um. I just think it's important to, to continue to support our kids. That's my opinion only.
And another thing that was important to remember is that they, there was a lot of miscommunication in regard to the compression that Hepner. Um, has in regard to taxes and how their city being under compression does not affect the bond. That they were gonna be equally responsible for paying for this bond. And there was, there was a lot of miscommunication that they were gonna get out of paying it and we're gonna get stuck with it.
Sorry, so I, I did have some comments. Um, one is I don't know if they were invited or if it was. Um, that they had to, that somebody from the school district was gonna be here. This was a, a few months back. It was, it was on our. Um.
Agenda.
Agenda. And then nobody came. And so I was disappointed to see that this is a request. I get that they're busy, but when you are putting out a bond, you're everywhere. This is your priority. The deadline is here and you're not here to talk about it. The deadline is here and you're not here to talk about it um in the event that we have questions. So there are, they they did put out, you know, different um different times for people to go. Um but a lot of the information that I saw, when I look at, this is a twenty year bond. I don't necessarily see the information that's needed for that. When I look at Sam Boardman and that the the improvement for the flow of traffic is one of the things that they're focused on. Um I look at the fact that part of the reason there's so much traffic is because there's so many kids in that building. And if in a few years. We may need modulars, why are we not considering expansion? If that's going to be the case, like I want to know what your kindergarten um enrollments are looking like. Same thing with some of the other schools. If your enrollment is down and you're looking at fifth grade below. To look at what your schools are going to look like in a few years. Are we going to be paying fifty million for a building that's going to be empty? When I went to the last bond um meeting, that was just a few years back. Um I went through and asked a lot of questions um and the response that I got was not of we want questions. Um I it was like shut down. They didn't have the answers to a lot of things. So it was really discouraging to then want to go again. And a lot of the same people were there. So. When you know, when we're looking at. People have to trust that they're going to be using the funds appropriately. One of the questions that I asked last time was if we're combining a building. Are you going to then eliminate an administrator position? That's an administrator salary. And I was told no, we were not considering that. So again, are you using funds appropriately? Um you know, these are, these are things that will come up. Do I think that there is a need now? Yes, there is definitely a need. I want to see these things happen. But what I'm also looking at is the courthouse in Hepner. Um now that it's out to bid, right? Like there was the the discussion of it's not just a hundred thousand. It's not just five hundred thousand dollars more, but it's in the millions. Right? So when you, when you look at a bond, it's going to be passed. When the taxes are collected and they're going to go put these out for bid. The price they get that they estimated is probably going to increase. So who's going to determine what's going to get cut? And for me, one of the things that I think about is like, I don't want to know that there was a group of people, a committee about. What what should what should we do? Should we have something in every single town? Right? And everybody raise your hand if you agree. Rather, I would I would rather hear like I, they were given all of this data. About enrollments, about the needs, not just currently, but like in ten years, what are going to be the needs? And that they voted based on that information. Because then when you're looking at like, what's going to have to be cut? Are we going to trust that that's going to happen? Because then education fair is not equity. So those are my thoughts. Like I said, I do do wish to see it happen, but at the same time, there's a lot of concerns and a lot of hesitation on my part.
Karen, sorry, she was. She has given up her spot for you.
This one time, wow. Um. So I was the only person who went to the Sage Center, Morrell County School District. Um thing that they had in the afternoon. They did a live Facebook, but I was the only person who didn't work for the Sage Center or worked for the school district. Who attended. And one of the things that you said, they have a ten percent contingency that they're allowing for. But they don't know that in today's real world changing costs, that that's quite enough. So I agree. I think there's a concern. Um I heard, don't know this for a fact, but you heard that the night that they did the open house at Riverside to go through the building. They had like three or four people. That was it. Almost no one. Went to Riverside to tour the building, see the condition. Now I'm familiar with the hallway that is. A topic and I'm engaged in other activities that couldn't attend, but. I agree, it's an economic benefit for our entire county, not just our community. But you if you bring up some very good questions, Christina, and I don't want to be dismissive of those. Um. I I didn't try to be on the committee, so I have to trust that the committee did its due diligence in asking and answering those questions. Now it's your turn.
So do you want to hear the spiel I give to everybody or you want me to do the short spiel?
Short, please.
If you go to their website. And you go down and you look at their frequently asked questions, I think you'll see the answers to most of it. They've done a really good job this time. They knew that they didn't provide what they should have the last time. And so and I think from a community standpoint. It would look poorly of the city of Boardman not to be in support of the school bond. Because you and I all know that the when I want to move to town. The very first place I drive to is the school. It I don't care. You can talk to every real estate person in the world. And all of our economic development people and they say, if you don't have good schools, I'm not stopping there. And you all know that. Every community around us are building new schools and saying they are as good or better than we are. Now, I agree that. I think this is what you have to hope. That our assessed value will come up so much. That in twenty years, we'll have paid the bond off hopefully like in twelve years. And we can go back out for another bond because I think most people are not naive to think. That all the things we're passing over right now. They can't wait twenty more years. I mean, they just can't. So. They tried to make the best decisions they I mean. And if you know, remember that the last time they went out, you know, it was all about AC Holden. Because it was the oldest school. Well, then the walls start falling in on the junior high area. And so they are taking the um. Money of that. And. So I'm just waiting for somebody that has. If you, you can vote however you like and that's a, that's whatever your business is, but. If it goes down. I hope the people that voted no will get out with a better idea and get to work on it right now. Because it doesn't make any difference. It's got to be done.
Yeah.
And somebody better do it. And this passing the buck another year and another year is going to cut it for them or. And any of the other schools in Morrell County.
Well, the last time it got passed over, I think it was only a hundred fifty. And now it's cost us another fifty million dollars and that was only what, two years ago, three years?
No, the the there was a huge difference in what they were going to build.
I know, but what I'm saying is is now.
Yeah.
Oh, and it's going to be it. I think it's just the necessity of. If you don't do it this year. And this bond fails, I would be shocked if they they won't come out next year again. You know, it'll be two or three years. So everything is three years more dilapidated. And probably more expensive. And then just to make you feel really good, I want to tell you that when I came in.
Sorry. Now I've heard this four times. That's what I've heard. I've talked to you four times, only in my life.
Now you're throwing me off my feet.
Don't keep going, I'm sorry.
No, but in 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 the seventies, we were paying thirteen dollars and something. A thousand for education. I have tax things that I bring to show you that in eighty five. We were paying eight dollars and something. I'm asking you for two dollars and ninety nine cents, which will probably turn into three and a quarter. But anything. But still, I'm not asking you near what your parents had to pay to see that you guys had a school. That we had schools in Norman and Haragon and stuff, so.
I think the operative word here is safe schools.
Uh?
Safe. One of the biggest, one of the big, like if you go out, you ask people to tell you what the most important thing is for their taking to go to school. And the very first one is a safe school. A place they can trust their child is safe to go to, to be inside and to participate in the activities. Well, I think safe schools.
So that when I, when I look at Haragon too, I remember what you met with high school. It was like, like I spent a lot of time in the schools. And I can remember them, they had to force the kids to go there because they had nowhere to go. And you could literally see the foundation. Rumbling in the hallways. And I the first thing I thought was, how is this even legal? For kids to be in. They were in there for like another two or three years after that. And I think what happened was one of the buildings ended up collapsing. And I mean, and that's how they finally got their school done. I mean, is that what we want? I mean, how how can we brag about being? You know, fastest growing city in Oregon and all these jobs and all this other stuff, and then we don't take care of our schools. Like, I don't know.
We're off topic.
Yeah, the thing uh, the the issue that we're going to have is the letter of support is not going to be on. Uh citywide letter that uh I think it should be more of a consensus that we're in support. I don't believe that it should be a. Uh a press release. I I think we had a discussion to pretty much get. An idea that the city council pretty much in general is in support of the bond. Uh based on legal counsel, they advised that none of that should happen. So.
Why didn't you say that in the very beginning? We wouldn't have had it.
Don't get this discussion to happen. Then people. Understand um where people are coming from and understand that for the most part, the city. Uh city council is in favor of and they of the bond and they have their different ways. Want to be financially, want to be building, I mean. An investment in our community, things like that. So.
And everybody's in in matters.
Absolutely.
That's what I believe. And that's expected.
And I asked Ethan and he said, we'll just keep going right on.
He didn't want to give a comment?
I didn't uh exclude Ethan. So moving right on, we'll go right to the reports, police reports. Does anybody have, we've got the report in front of us. Anybody have any?
Other public comment? I'm sorry, I don't know if anyone signed up.
I don't have any. Sorry, my first public.
Speak at it on a card or like sign up.
There, the card right there.
Yeah, I did pass that up.
Are we having any plans?
We are. It's a very short public comment. He's super cold in here.
Thank you.
When it turns on, it works very well.
Did you bring your space heater? And a space heater, you must plug right in.
Oh, she wants that. Okay, go ahead. You can just introduce yourself.
I'm named Victor Scott. Um. I grew up in this town, which school here, moved here in, I think, ninety three. Um. I didn't make it to the Boardman walk through because I don't think it was properly advertised, but that's my opinion. I think it should have been. Put everywhere. I think there's way more um effort that needs to happen in this community over getting information out. Um I think it was that way twenty five years ago and I think it's still that way. Um. This town is very short on housing. And I would say that is done by the neglect of the city council and city, what they call county fathers or however you want to refer to it because. So I'm a little bit passionate about this, but when I see an apartment, a one bedroom apartment here costing more than a two bedroom in Tri-Cities. We've done something wrong. Right behind you, it says, if Boardman City Council believes in responsible leadership is built on principles of transparency. Amazon came in and wasn't transparent. Those are doors, backdoor deals. If you guys cared about your community and cared about your school and no offense, but the neglect that's happened in that school is disgusting. The pictures that I can see online, I I worked construction for twenty years and anyone who's worked construction knows that's not just. Aging, that's neglect. When something happens, you can repair it for much cheaper, much easier, and you have a maintenance gone on crew and you can do that. To say that's not true is is ignorant and a lie. Just plain and simple. You can't set up your, second of all, I'd agree with you that uh Charlotte, they don't like questions in this town. Especially even the meeting room to hear him and and we're truly starting a family in this community. And so we're, while our children aren't in high school yet. We we care about our community and going there and asking questions and having. My wife just asked a few concerning questions and feeling like. We weren't welcome there anymore. And then so to hear a city council say they don't like questions. Um we were just at the at the little uh. Luncheon Senior Center where they brought it, they're bringing in the detention center for minors over here by Lamb Weston. And they call it Arrested Center or whatever, but the more research I've done, it's a detention center for children. It's not what we what Heather talked about at the city council, the other lady talked about at the senior center over here. It's not what they say. They're smoothing over them. And every time, every time I see things smoothed over, smoothed over and done right, and I see transparency. Communication integrity. Who was here to fight when Amazon came in and said, hey? We've had a bond as someone said twenty years ago, uh three years ago, eight years ago. Who was there to say, hey, instead of giving you a big tax break, why don't you like? I don't know, do something good for Amazon and say, look, we built these new schools in the area because we came in here and we thought a little tax deduction wouldn't hurt. Did no one fight for this city? Did no one stand up and fight? Do they just? There's a thing called talking to distance. You think you're one thing, you say you're one thing. No, no, that's not me. But then you go and you you do it again. I'm a, I'm a. I'm going to have a new resolution and you're eating, you know, candy bar in your closet. What which is it? Are you going to diet or are you candy bar in your closet? Like this is an infant crushing machine, the orphan crushing machine. So it's happening. Things that don't need to happen, happen in this town. And then when the housing rates jump, skyrocket, every poor person in town, every person on fixed income. Every elderly person who can't make more money just has to pay double for rent. Well, they can just get over it. They can just get through it. You're crushing people and you don't care, you know? Not to go crazy or extreme, but this is this whole state is a sanctuary, see? And for forty years, we've been forced to allow people in nineteen eighties. We were told. And I'll tie this together real quick. We were told we had to let in twenty million people because of amnesty. You could round out twenty million people in San Diego. And then in the late nineties and two thousand, we were told there's another twenty to thirty million people. And then we're told there's another twenty to thirty million people. If I do the math, twenty, forty, sixty, maybe eighty million people. How how many natural born American citizens doesn't have a right to a job? Eighty million. And and chief from the police is and we don't have any rule of law when you ignore one rule. You can't say, well, it's I'm not going to enforce, you know. And you can rob a bank and keep the money. It's okay. No. When you rob a bank and you get caught, you lose the money. When you commit fraud and you get caught, you lose the money. Uh we're, we are intentionally neglecting our society. From our children to our elderly, to the sick, to the disabled, we are intentionally neglecting them. On these great hopes of goodness and leadership and communication. There's there are no transparency. There hasn't been transparency here. I I I informed a guy named Arthur West, and if you don't know who he is, Google him because school board is going to be on the map. Arthur West is a guy who sues cities, counties and governments. And he sues them to the ground until they submit and get in line. And I talked to him this week because, well, my wife met him four years ago and he's my best friend now. Weir's way, but the one thing I learned is. The community says they care and when people have questions and they're not received, there's no care in the community, none. And you can go ahead and say it and that's I'm not degrading on each each. I don't know each person. Some of these people I know, I I don't know exactly where I know you, but I've been around. I know you somewhere. I I know you somewhere. I think I went to school with your kids maybe. Um I I'm from this community. I care about the community. And to see, like, my my mom's an elderly lady and they enforce code on her. My dad, the year he died, he got a criminal. Psychation for garbage on his property. But yet there's four houses around my block that I can't even walk as a disabled person on the sidewalk because they're so overgrown and the sidewalks are broken. I can't take my service down to the park because it's covered in goat heads. I can't can't go anywhere in this community because it's a shit hole town and pardon my friend. But it's a shit hole town when I can't go out to this dog course because my dog can't even go with me. My service town. Can't even participate with me because it's covered in goat heads for miles.
We're going to have to ask you to repent.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And I'll shut it down. But thank you for the the time. And I also, just one last thing, I think the public comment should be maybe a little clearer. And, and, and when you close it down, maybe give a couple more seconds or something.
I didn't read it. I didn't read the thing because you just kinda jumped in and said you wanted to speak. So, um, I, I didn't read the, the, the message that allows you three minutes and things. But I thought since you're the only one and I thought I'd give you five minutes.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. For, if you have a question, please report.
If I can, just a minute, um. As you can see, call volume continues to increase. Uh, I would highly recommend, uh, that the council, uh, uh. Support tightening up of our video, our Zoom meetings. Um, it's becoming, uh, normal. Uh, or has, we've seen an increase where, uh, you can't, it's hard to, until we lock the, the, the meeting down a little bit. Anybody can jump on and put very vulgar stuff on the screen before you have an opportunity to. Address it. It happened at, at the fire department recently, one of their board meetings. Somebody got it on and put some very vulgar videos. Uh, and it, that, they virtually had shut the computer off just to stop it. So maybe I would recommend looking at tightening up the Zoom rules to where. Everybody that wants to, uh, come on, uh, have to have permission to turn their camera on. And probably their microphone. Just, just a suggestion because it's gonna happen, just a matter of time. Uh, we did hire a new officer from, uh. Mississippi. He started, uh, the first of May. Um, I listened to him on the radio today and our dispatch center is starting. I understand what it's saying. Uh, this is quite interesting.
Strong accent.
Very much so. Um, sixteen-year, seventeen-year police officer, so hopefully he'll be a good fit. Uh, but unfortunately with this, the flip of the coin, uh, one of our, our, uh, new officers that hasn't even been with us for two years. Uh, has applied and is in backgrounds for Hermiston Police Department, so we'll most likely lose him. Uh, so we're gonna play that game on. Anyway, that's all. If there's any questions.
Any comments?
Does, does law enforcement have? If we pay for the academy training?
So if they, if they don't complete the three-year, uh, uh, commitment. Then the agency who steals them from the other agency has to pay them, or pay the city back. For the portion, whatever portion remaining of that obligation. But I, I would tell you, it's easily twenty to thirty thousand to get the master train to have them go somewhere. Which. I love to grow our own. I'd love that idea, but this is the consequence. Of doing that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Building Department.
Good evening, everybody. So, uh, construction has picked up. We have, um, a lot more inspections. I have. Probably six houses waiting to be, have the plans reviewed. Um, so we're picking up. It's a, it's a good thing. It's normal for this time of year. Our numbers are steady. Any questions?
All right. Doesn't sound like anybody's got anything for you, Glenn.
All right, thanks, guys.
It's a lot in our area, though, sixty-four.
I spoke too soon.
Don't even start. It is, it's a lot. You are working hard.
But that's okay. Comments or questions?
All right.
I didn't mean to distract you.
No, I'm all good. Just, you know, yeah, you are working hard. That's a lot of permits to tackle and run through, just for Boardman.
All right, Public Works Report. This is your first, correct?
So we have been super busy, as you can see, uh, we moved some logging in the community, you know? Or maybe you can't. They've done a few trees, uh, on South Main. The future expansion of Main Street's gonna need some more rooms, so we're taking that down. We've also, we've quit watering. Main Street West, green zones, out by the white fence. Because that's all gonna get tore up. We did their last mow today, cut it short. Um, so that's all gonna get taken out, so we're in a lot of sense and. Keeping it nice and pretty and groomed, but that's gonna happen here in the next month, so. Let's see, what else we got? We got lots of, uh, water issues, uh. That are being repaired. If you plan any drifts off, you can see that we've got the. The number ten. Hole is kind of blocked by a, a construction area that we had to. Get a new band for the, for the main coming out of correctly three, and that should be repaired shortly in, and, uh. Good to go. That's about, that's probably about for, for answering their questions.
Here's a question for you. When could we start anticipating, uh? Disgruntled drivers due to construction on Main Street?
So, we are.
Maybe frustrated might be the.
Yeah, um, we're gonna have an alternate route. I mean, we're gonna do the loop on South, Southwest Main first. That will come out in the circle drive here and you will get around Main Street. Once, because Main Street's gonna be taken out from the crosswalk with this concrete bar, pretty much to Wilson. So there will be alternate ways on the next ride, so. Um, it, it will be gravel, correct? So it'll be paved.
For where?
The, the loop. It will be, it'll be, it'll be improved gravel road. It's not gonna be tape wall of Main Streets. I believe that's the case. Yeah, I, it's gonna be gravel, because they're gonna have to tape everything once, right? Because they gotta get that road built. And then have it too gray to be asphalted before they. Care out Main Street, you know, Main Street would go out. So that's gonna happen. I mean, the loop road's gonna start here, we can have. Two weeks.
And, and then we'll get a, uh. When he's doing the meeting with the contractors here soon, then we'll have a schedule. I mean, it changes, but we'll send it out.
I think one of the things I had asked for last time was just if. If we could have some little signs that say construction will begin. You know, June fourteenth or whatever, so then I know. Yeah, then I can either, I, I would know, right, on my way to work, I'd have to leave here or I'd have to find the alternate route.
Then I, I did, I did meet with the Loop Transit and kind of build them on, on what's going on so they can take their route again.
Yeah, I see in your report, it says trouble shoot operation issues with lift one, two and three. And so. I guess I'm a little curious, it seems to me we just. Refurbished one, two and three.
Right?
And. So is this because we're hooking up the new. System down at the, at the new shop, and so then we're working our way through getting that done?
The list stations are gonna be for the suicide. And there's, in the pump system now, there's a.
Yes.
For lack of a better term, it's a, it's a spider gear, right, that, uh, has to be. Pulled up, we're gonna do one at a time and pull them up. And get them without too full capacity.
So you don't think this is unusual? Okay, that's what I was concerned about, is that it was unusual. Okay.
But you just approved in the supplemental budget.
It is making sure.
When I think about the signs that we're gonna have to have so that people know not to, to make alternate plans. To get to the other side of the freeway. Will those be spread further away from Wilson so that? For example, if you live out. Out at the golf course, will you know not to try to go through Wilson? Further away.
Or come down, or come down Main from.
Right, yeah.
Right? If you come down Main, if you come from the golf course, come all the way to Main and come down, you just have to turn around, go. Yeah, we will, we will get.
And that's premieres as part of their job.
It's part of their job, okay.
So we'll have, and we'll have that posted for the public. And like, like not, not just big signs, I'm talking like. If somebody wanted to share it online, they would be allowed.
Right, we're meeting on Thursday, just when they had all that. Iron down with the contractor and.
I, I think that helped when we started doing southeast, uh, front street. And then Columbia anticipating a water issue in front of the mayor's council.
And unfortunately, the, the overpass via Doug work that ODOT did, there was. Zero communication, city board.
Right, and there was a lot of complaining from.
Yeah, no, they never, they never, we didn't know they were there until we just showed up. We were driving along and then they're, they're, yeah. So, so we will. We will do better than ODOT.
It will be a responsibility of the city, though. I can tell you that. It's not gonna do it. So just put it in your budget.
All right, anything else? We'll move down to, uh, planning official, Carla.
Good evening. I'm here, uh, happy to answer any questions, um. What I will say is that we are working, I, I really quickly, um, and diligently through all of the strategic planning stuff that's happening. Um, we had an EOA PAC meeting yesterday. Uh, we'll have a TSP PAC meeting next week. We have a community event on Thursday, or next Tuesday, um, for the Parks Master Plan. Um, and then our next, uh, Development Code and Comprehensive Plan PAC meeting will be the second of June, if I recall the date correctly, so. Lots coming up, um, on that front. Um, the Parks Master Plan is still on schedule to wrap up July timeframe, so that adoption will be coming your way soon. Um, the EOA will, uh, the, the meat of that will wrap up, um, probably September. And the TSP, um, slipped about a week, but we should still have adoption by Christmas. Um, and then the comprehensive plan development code work will wrap up next April or May. Um, a little bit of good news from this date, we should be able to start the housing capacity analysis process, um, in January. Of twenty twenty-six, um, and then of course, we're gonna have that conversation when we, after we adopt the TSP. Um, just how much it tells us about Main Street and the overpass. And what additional analysis we need to do around updating the Main Street IMP. And with the TSP being adopted in, in December, we should have enough information prior to that to start any work. Relative to the Main Street IMP shortly after the beginning of the calendar year. So, uh, happy to answer any questions on that. Lots of other work happening, uh, work continues on the municipal code. Um, the property out at Tower Road, uh, we've completed the land partition, um, again, we, I think we shared and you knew that we actually appealed that decision. Uh, got through the Board of Commissioners with the decision and should have a plat signed on that. So, yeah, happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Nobody has any questions for you, Carla?
What can I say?
Nice. That means you did your job well, then.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks, Carla.
Yep.
Committee reports? No committee reports? Do you manage a report?
Um, just real quick, you know, real special thanks, I was gone. To Hawaii on April twenty-second and it was beautiful, the weather was great. But the, I just wanted to say a special thanks to everyone who participated, um, for the cleanup, over seven hundred students. I mean, I, I haven't heard of how, how much garbage we collected or anything, but.
It was a lot, according to Mr. Bor.
Yeah, I talked to him. Yeah, I mean, it really was very cool, um. So just me.
So we. Everything you get to have hamburgers.
The what?
I remember didn't get to enjoy the hot dog beef.
They did not.
No, they got the ice cream sandwiches.
They did get ice cream sandwiches. We can look at doing that some, next year. I mean, this will be the same thing. This is the concept for annual. Um, so with the business license, I, I just, I, I wrote a little blurb on my report. And here is the thought. So I contacted Umatilla and Hermiston, they are closest neighbors. Hermiston has a solicitor's license specifically. If you wanna come in. And you're like a door-to-door salesman, you have to come check in with the city, get a license, they re. Umatilla or Hermiston request a background check. If you do not adhere to a background check, you can't come. So I wanna look into that and I'll present something. Um, the other thing is that with accommodate. The, the, like the transient food vendors is to do a mobile vendor. And within the mobile vendor would be some kind of food truck. Process, we have no, and we've had a couple people that have requested food trucks and right now it's, we have a couple pods and those have been. Grandfather, I mean, they've been approved. And then, but we don't have a process of doing additional food trucks. So the concept is coming to the council and having a solicitor's license. And a mobile vendor process, which should. Uh, you know, accomplish all that you guys are asking. This is not gonna be a full-blown business license for everyone, but it would be. Those outlying areas, those individuals in the right of way, things like that, that, hey, you can't be in the right of way. We had someone on our property selling things and we just. There's a possibility of looking at, um, creating some space on Southwest Front. Uh, doing a paving and, and having that space available possibly for people to go and. And settle, you know, for the individuals to do the fruit or something like that. Again, we're gonna have more space up there.
Well, a comment you shared with me, uh, was. We know the businesses that are here. Kind of know the businesses. We don't know the pop-up ones very well.
Correct.
You know, and. I'll just leave it at that.
So do we get to have some input before you put something over on? The west, southwest front?
What do you mean, front street?
Well, I think private business built the pot over here and spent a lot of money.
Oh, whether the city would do something? Yeah, and my thought it was gonna be like an open space. It's like, it's just we're, we're asphalting it, maybe they could do it. Again, it was just a thought.
No, well, I wanna know if we get, before you think too far.
I mean, it's gonna be asphalted regardless.
Probably when we start writing where the food vendors go.
Correct.
We can look at that.
Correct, that's what I'm, yeah, yeah.
Cause we'd have to decide whether we want another food block.
Yeah, or however, it, again, it's just an option, but yeah.
Yeah, well, I was thinking like if you're, if you're having the, the mobile pop-up sort of vendors. That if you're saying, well, you can't be here, you can't be here, that you do have some of those that then go onto some private property and then there's, there's issues, right? Whereas if they're coming to you, that you could say, here's where you could.
Possibly.
Like when you're selling after you've gotten your permit or whatever from the city, here's where you could. And, and if we have a space where. It worked even for, um. The farmer's market. Right, like that we could have a space just where, where sometimes things like that could happen, first of all.
And again, it would fall on, it would be under the Google, mobile vendor concept. Um, and the last thing, just to bring up, I. I know there have been a few people disgruntled. Um, we closed down the restrooms at City Park and, and let me just explain. So I, I put on my administrator principal hat every now and then. And it, it was beyond frustrating to go in and see just the blatant. Disregard for like public property. There were drug needles. So there were safety issues, there was just, uh, gross all over the thing and, and I just didn't feel that was. Safe for our staff to have to go clean that up, nor did I want someone like a child to go in there and pick those. So it was not necessarily a willy-nilly thought. But it really was very like a safety oriented and, and we are gonna be respectful on our property. So that is something that may happen again. Um, we're looking at options of being able to close the doors at dusk and it would be an automatic close, so we don't have to have staff go and do it. But just so you are aware, that was, that was the issue. I do the same thing at school, too. We needed to close the bathrooms so people would be more respectful, we could watch better, we do the same. I do the same thing at school, too. We need to close the bathrooms so people would be more respectful. We could watch better. Can we do this?
Override my power, I can't. Mine says. Well, mine says critical alert and override class.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I got you. Uh. Counselor comments? We have some things.
I would, I was gonna say something as he left. You know, I think it's important to hear some, you know, some what people perceive as bad. And uh, it's the only way you can improve. And so, um. I don't feel it's as bad as maybe it's portrayed, but I do think it's important to give negative comments sometimes, even if we don't like it. Just because, like I said, you're not ever gonna improve if you don't. You only hear good things. I think she sprouted up months ago was, how are you ever gonna know you're doing anything wrong? You only hear good things. And so I do appreciate his comments and I do um. Whether I agree with everything or not, definitely, I can say, I guess.
I will say that just from a straight communication standpoint. Sometimes you can feel like you've hit it in the newspaper, you put it out on Facebook, you've thrown up some posters and flyers and it's on reader boards. But it still doesn't seem to get out to the mass population. And. I've eat, I've had similar complaints about. Getting communication out to people. I don't know, you guys, some of you are gonna remember this, but when I first moved to Boardman, there was an actual TV station. Dedicated to the city of Boardman and it had whatever was happening in Boardman just on a loop, like a PowerPoint loop. And if you got bored, you could find out what was happening. I love the new city of Boardman's uh alert. I can get it in a text message and an email and a, I don't know, you guys maybe send it out SOS, I don't know, but. I get it a lot of ways, right? And I feel like that's really powerful. Maybe people aren't tapping into it like they could because that would. But I don't know, are we even open to receive just any old willy-nilly message? So that's the other thing, but. I I do agree with them about communication and it's hard to get the message out. I knew about the school district stuff, but. That was only because I was part of listening to it.
Well, and it wasn't from lack. I'm not putting it on multiple public Facebook pages.
Yeah.
Right, but maybe that's not the only avenue we need to pursue. We need to. I I I think for the thing that the behavioral health did, they put posters up everywhere on all those little reader boards outside. The grocery store and at the C and D and I was angry about that. I was. Because when they went to the county commission, they said, well, nobody came to our open house meeting in Boardman. It was then what open house meeting? I'm an informed citizen and I don't know about your meeting, so. I get the the disconnect for communication. I feel like there's an issue there, so I don't know. Something to consider.
We can, the other county comments. I don't have mayor, uh, uh, comment other than. I don't get Facebook. I don't do Facebook. I decided uh a month ago that I was gonna ban Facebook off my phone. It's too negative. I don't listen to it. I don't talk to it. I don't do any of that anymore. And. Uh, since we got the old reader board gone, I don't get to sit at Sinclair and sit there and watch the reboarding. Because you're not in access to be able to watch it and I don't park at the. Thing to watch. Here, tell me you can't see the school districts reboarding.
From your classroom?
No, that the arrogant one. I know, I think that one thing is so bright. It probably is really bright. It probably is. I I don't I don't travel that way anymore. Because I mean, the other school on the, but anyway, uh, we, so yeah, communication is hard, especially if you are not the Facebook person. Uh, we don't have, or or you get the local paper. You know, we don't have a little paper, so.
No, for our times.
Well, we do.
That's our monthly of the north end, and if you want any other type of news from another end, you can get that paper as well, but. So it is hard to get that and I wa, I get to have for the city set. Or I have a really good wife that tells me what I need to. She tells me the news that I miss. All right, so. We are gonna go past, we're gonna go into executive session. We're gonna go past the nine o'clock time, so be aware of that. This meeting is being conducted with public access in person and. Uh, in accordance with Oregon Public Meeting Law. Okay? The Wardman City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS one ninety-two. Dot six six zero two E, which allows the council to meet in executive session to consider real estate. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session in person. The public virtual Zoom meeting link. Will be closed during the executive session as permissible. Executive session meetings are not subject to HB twenty-five sixty. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations. Or any said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session. Executive session is expected to last thirty minutes and action is not planned after we resume the council meeting. So I will suspend or pause.
There may be action.
Oh, there may be action now?
There may.
There may be action. It says in big blue words, no. Thank you for.
After.
Giving you that. Okay. So I will pause this meeting and we'll go into executive session.
We'll try to give it for a different teacher.
All right, we resume our council meeting. Uh, we've exited. Our executive session and do we have any decisions that need to be made?
Okay, I will do allow City Manager Hammond to enter negotiations to purchase properties located at four N twenty-five E zero nine D A. Loss eight hundred, one hundred and one zero one.
I second that.
Okay, got a motion this second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Can you oppose? Okay, this uh city council meeting is adjourned.